Welcome to this work session for June 24, 2019. And two items, and I will turn it over to Mr. Wheeler.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. We have two work sessions this evening. Both are styled as discussion. There is no action item related to this on the agenda this evening. Should their council reach a consensus on any item, we would appreciate some direction to prepare an item for a future agenda item. Excuse me, a future agenda. Ellen Roberts, City Engineer, is going to present the Shipwreck Island discussion, but I thought it might be helpful for some of us to sort of set a context for a portion of this. I'm not sure how long the city has been looking at this intersection, but you may recall, and it was referenced last summer, Kublenz Transportation did a study of that intersection in 2002, and they came up with three options at that time in 2002. In 2010, not too long after I first got here in January, we had a discussion with council because the EDA was in the process of beginning to actively market the teen center property. And the essential question was which of those three, or should there be any of those three, should we plan for, not do, but plan for spatially with property? And what the council said at that time was, we're not sure what option is the ultimate option, but plan for the largest space need of the three options until such time that that is refined. So several years go by, and the EDA does just that. Several years go by, 2018, last June, we had a work session with you. We re-presented the three Kublenz options, plus an option that staff, particularly Garrett from our engineering department, took the lead on, which was an option that was really only on the city-owned property, didn't require us to acquire property from anyone else. At that time, the, well, certainly no decision was made. It appeared to us that the consensus was of the four options, the council was most interested in that last option, and we were asked to go back and sharpen the pencil on that. We also got some suggestions from Councilman Green, for example, to look at turn lanes and potentially some traffic calming that could go through that intersection. And we came back to you in February of this year and presented that fourth option, two alternatives of which, one was the basic alternative, and the other was the one that incorporated the traffic, the turn lanes and the traffic calming. And Ellen will get into that. But at the time of the meeting, the council asked us to go back and get traffic count data, which we have gotten for you, and information regarding accidents, which Ellen worked with the police department to get for the last two years, and that's in your package as well. So I know that Ellen's report, and I'm certainly not trying to steal her thunder, but it talks about if you want to move forward in the short run, a couple of options. But just want to sort of lay out what I think those two options and two other options are for you. Again, no decision is on your agenda tonight. One is simply to take it under advisement and take no action in the foreseeable future. Option two is to refer this idea to be prioritized in a future CIP. And then the two options for moving forward in the short term, which Ellen contained in her staff report, one is to work towards the state revenue sharing grant application, and the other is to decide to forego that and move to a local cash-funded option. If ultimately the council is desirous of considering either the revenue sharing grant application in the near term, or the cash funding option in the near, or city-funded option, I should say, in the near term, we would need some guidance to prepare resolutions for your future consideration, whether that would be design alternative one or two. The only thing that's real timely here is if the council would like us to pursue a revenue sharing application this year, we'd need sufficient guidance so we could prepare a resolution for your consideration at your next meeting, since you will not meet again until after the application deadline has expired. With that, I'll stop talking, and Ellen will walk you through what we have.
Hey, Garrett, can you have Cheryl give the lights, please?
You have to go with paper copy to come on screen.
Okay.
Fortunately, everyone has a paper copy.
Okay, so, all right. Does anybody need a paper copy? We do, I do hope one extra if need be. Okay, all right. Okay, so Randy explained why we're back. We're here to present the additional data that you asked us to gather and also to receive any direction you might want to give on the project. Shipwreck Island is typically, an intersection should cross at right angles, basically look like a cross, if you have four roads coming into it. Shipwreck Island is offset, basically, Pecosa Avenue, that north reach of Pecosa Avenue and Laiden Way are separated by about 80 feet. Okay? If you have offset legs like that, you either consider it to be two intersections that are a certain minimum distance apart, or, like I said, it should ideally be that direct, one leg should be directly across from the other leg. And the road design standards call for those intersections, if they are offset, to be offset by 440 feet. So obviously, if we only have 80 feet separating our intersections, it would be considered substandard by road design standards. The other challenge at the intersection is that the, there's a slight curve as you run through the intersection. And anytime you have a curved road, you have a little bit less line of sight, you have a little bit less visibility. You can't see as far down the road. And when you're about, you're making decisions on when to make turns, that can be an issue. So that's what's going on at the intersection now. So, at the February 25 meeting, two alternatives were presented. One was, and the goal of these improvements was to start by aligning the intersections so that Pecosa Avenue North and Laiden Way were as close to directly opposite each other as we could get them, within the existing right-of-way. We didn't want to have to buy, or the direction was not to have to buy any additional right-of-way. Secondary goals were to improve that line of sight as you were going through the intersection by maybe getting out a little bit of the curvature of the road, and also look at traffic calming. The reason for looking at traffic calming or trying to encourage people to slow down a bit through the corridor is you have a school zone directly to the west of the intersection, excuse me, to the, east of the intersection, to the west of the intersection, you have a curve, a sharp curve, that's difficult to navigate if you're speeding. So those were the primary and the secondary goals. The first alternative presented had a price tag of $375,000, and it was intended to realign Laiden Way so that it met, so it entered the intersection directly across from Pecosa Avenue. So in this particular case, we didn't get into adding turn lanes, or straightening the curve out any, or providing any traffic calming. The second alternative included those secondary features. It has a price tag of $600,000, so you're once again putting Laiden Way, realigning it, so it enters the intersection directly across from Pecosa Avenue. It also did a little bit of reconfiguring Little Florida and Pecosa Avenue on the through way, or the through path, so that you took some of the curvature out of the intersection. Turn lanes were, would have been added from Little Florida to Laiden Way, and from Laiden Way to Pecosa Avenue, to kind of keep the traffic volume, you know, increase capacity of the intersection, keep everybody moving. Finally, that alternative calls for raised curbed medians, so that when you entered it and you saw this thing sticking out of the ground, you may decide to slow down a little bit. And those were all meeting Federal Highway Administration and VDOT standards, mostly Federal Highway Administration standards. After presenting those alternatives to council, you requested that we go back and get a little bit more information on the existing intersection. Predominantly, we were supposed to look, try to gather some speed and volume data for the intersection, and also gather some accident data, so we could really understand what's going on at that intersection now. So, the memo provided in the council package includes detailed information on the traffic count, the traffic volume data, and also the speed data that was taken. So what I'm going to talk about are just the takeaways from that, the consultant work that, the consultant did that and provided a memo, which is in your package. First of all, there is more, and just to give you, kind of give you some comparison at what you're seeing in terms of traffic volume at this intersection compared to other intersections in the city. This particular intersection receives more traffic volume on a daily basis than three of the city's four signalized intersections. So you see more traffic volume at With Creek and Victory Boulevard, but you see less at With Creek and Pecosa Avenue, and the other informations with, or intersections with traffic signals. One thing that was very interesting about the traffic volume and the turn counts was that this intersection experiences a very high percentage of left-hand turning movements. And if you think about people leaving the city to go to work, or people coming from one end of the city to take their children to the schools, that kind of makes sense. But obviously, you may see more turns at this intersection than if you would at an intersection that has more, or where you don't have those destinations, or you see less impact from commuter traffic. Finally, they looked at speeds. Now typically, you don't do a speed study at an intersection because people are slowing down to make turns. But what they did see is that the speed at the 85th percentile, and that's what you use, you figure out what, how fast all the cars are going, you measure that, and you set the speed limit at the 85th percentile, so 85% of the cars or drive at that speed or less. So what the study found is that 85% of the cars were driving 30 to 35 miles per hour at that intersection or less. So on the surface, it would make sense to have a road with that sort of 85th percentile to keep the speed limit at 35 miles per hour, except for the fact, with all these turns, you may, we may actually be seeing a little bit of speeding, or speeding before or after the intersection. Remember that this data is a little bit skewed because you have people slowing down to turn. So that was a factor, but obviously, you'd have to do speed studies at the various legs to get more data on the speeding through the corridor. So after we got the speed and the volume data, what we did is we contacted the Pecosa Police Department and got 2017 and 2018 accident data. We also looked at the corridor through Cedar Road to the east, and we looked to, almost to the middle school, excuse me, on the east, and to Cedar Road on the west. So we had a wider corridor, basically, to look at traffic accidents, so once again, we could have a little bit of context and see what was, else was going on in the road. What we saw with the traffic data, first of all, there are so few traffic, or there weren't enough traffic accidents to really form any long-term conclusions, but what we did see is that there were three intersections, accidents at Shipwreck Island. The next highest location of traffic accidents was at Cedar Road and Little Florida Road. The accidents at Shipwreck Island all involve people making improper turns, or someone trying to turn but not being sure they were in the correct location in the intersection and actually backing up. At Cedar Road, we had one accident that was an improper turn, and one accident where the driver was coming back after a late work shift and fell asleep in the car, and the car went off the road. So that's the traffic information, the data there. And that is basically what council requested. So as Randy said, at this point, we're looking for the next steps to take, and we're also just basically looking for directions, and we can also, when it comes to revenue sharing, we would get that money in fiscal year '21, '22, so we would start the project then. Or if we waited two years, it would be '23, '24 for that particular alternative.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to read this?
Yeah, councilmembers, words escaped me, so I'll just say, we are not broadcasting at the moment. Our whole broadcast system seems to be down. We are recording, and we hope to be able to post this as we always do, but right now, this is not going out on any of our channels, which is a surprise to us, because we tested the equipment, I understand, earlier today. So, anyway, I wanted to let you know that. I am sorry for that, and tomorrow I'll get red-faced and figure out what to do about it.
Okay. So what we have is a substandard intersection that does not meet current traffic codes with a curve which reduces visibility, but it's not a high accident intersection. And there are four options, as the manager mentioned. Do nothing, which is always an option if anything we consider, put in a CIP, which is county aid delay option, or decide which option we'd like to do, and Ellen will go ahead, well, if we decide for the cost sharing, Ellen will go ahead and put in the cost-sharing data, or bring us a resolution for next meeting to authorize her to put in the cost-sharing data. So, want to start with you, Thomas?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. When we got the information about this work session, especially the accident reports, because I think that's the most important part of this discussion, and obviously, like Ellen said, they couldn't even form a conclusion on why these cars were having accidents, because there, there's not enough there to support any data. And I think another good data point to look at is one, I reached out to Chief Bowen, and everybody has a copy of this, and it was emailed to us. And if I can read the data correctly, it tells us that there are six intersections or points in the city where there are more wrecks, significantly more wrecks, and five where there are just as many. So this is not, by far, not the worst intersection in the city. This is not a priority to me. I'm looking at the CIP now, and I see a lot of other projects where this money could be spent usefully. I think this is a case of wasteful spending if we go forward with it, whether we do the revenue sharing or local cash option. And I don't, and I would like to hear from everybody else. You know, I haven't had one person in my two and a half years on this council say, you know, I really wish y'all would fix that, that intersection. I don't think it's an issue. And I, obviously, the statistics and data supports that, so my position is not going forward with this project at all. Thank Garrett and Ellen for the work and time they've put in, and it's great work. And if that intersection was an issue, I would be more than willing to go forward with the idea, but it's not a problem.
Councilwoman Andrews?
At the last time we met, I had said that I absolutely would not consider doing it at all if the city had to pay 100% of that, that I would only consider it if we were to get funds to pay for half of it, because that's just too much. So it says here, the improvements are meant, because that was going to be one of my questions tonight, what's the objective? What is our objective in doing this? What's the purpose? So it says here, it's meant to increase the safety of the intersection by aligning the intersections and reduce the speed. But, you know, once I got the, like Thomas, once I saw the accident report, it doesn't seem to me that that intersection is a huge safety. I mean, I drive through that intersection twice a day during the busiest times of the day. Not once in my 20 years have I had to stop because of an accident at that intersection. Three times this year, I've had to stop and go a different way home because of a car in a ditch turned over sideways on Little Florida, three times already this year. I see way more accidents coming down Little Florida where people go in the ditches. I've never come across one, not that, obviously, there were three in 2017 and '18, which were not at times when I was driving through the intersection, but I go through there twice a day during rush hour, and when school is going. And so I don't see that safety is something that we need to have $300,000 spent on, and it says reduce speeding, but the curve does reduce the speeding. We would actually be straightening it out, increasing the speeding, and then have to spend extra money to reduce the speeding back down again, which doesn't seem, I'm sorry, but that just doesn't seem logical to me. So I understand that it's not up to par, and would it improve that intersection if we did it? Absolutely, it would improve that intersection without a doubt. Do I think that our budget is to the point that we've taken care of enough of the items that I constantly hear that, you know, are gonna wear out, are worn out, need to be fixed, need to be replaced in the CIP, that we need to, it justify spending that? I don't.
Councilwoman Hutt?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. My thoughts on the subject, if we decide to do it, we should absolutely pursue the revenue sharing. It was eye-opening to me to find out that this is the second busiest intersection within the city. And to put things in context, I'm not a subject matter expert on road design and construction, but I do have 34 years' experience with hands-on training, academic education in shipbuilding design and construction, so I'm not totally illiterate. But in cases like this, I tend to lean on people who are subject matter experts, such as Councilman Green, such as our engineering staff, and I'm very appreciative of y'all's efforts and all the excellent expertise you have provided to us. But I'm, I do rely on people such as that, and I tend to rely not so much on past and present as I do present and future. What might this intersection be like in five years, or 10 years, or 20 years? I don't know, but I always think it's good to prepare in the present tense for the future. So those are my thoughts at this time. Thank you.
Councilman Sada?
Yeah, I would not be in favor of this project if we tried to fund it with CIP. I would only be interested in doing this project with cost sharing. However, my personal concern for this project is that, in my personal experience of driving through that intersection, the most confusing thing for me is going down Little Florida toward the middle school and making a left turn on Pecosa Avenue. The way it is right now, that's a very awkward procedure, and early in the morning, especially during school times, that is a terrible intersection to go through if you're going to try to make a left turn, the traffic bottlenecks in there if anybody tries to make a left turn onto Little Florida. It's the same thing from going from Pecosa Avenue, making a left turn toward the schools. The school buses have a hard time, and they're getting backed up there. Having the, having the access lanes and widen it up, I believe, would tend to help that a lot. And the cost, again, for cost sharing for the city, for the two different models were...
300.
300?
It's basically a 50/50 required match, so if you were to grab the $375,000 option as the preferred option on behalf of that, and were to choose as council, the second, the more robust option, I'd estimate a local cost would be 300.
Okay. Then I would only be in favor of this if we did the option that gives us the turn lanes, and if we had cost sharing, and after a good conversation with the city manager of reference, spending the $300,000 versus other things the city might need.
Does, if we put it on the CIP, when we do get ready to do it, does that, that doesn't eliminate the cost share, does it? I don't think that would...
If the council were to decide in furtherance of, let's say, option two, that you wanted it to be considered in a future capital improvements plan, it could still be considered as a future revenue sharing program, it just wouldn't, and by selecting that, it would not be selected what I referred to as option three, which is a short-term revenue sharing application prepared and submitted by the end of the summer. It would be in future years. As Ellen said, the next opportunity is two years from that, and it's on a two-year cycle. So as we would typically propose a capital improvements project, it comes at the out year, so it would likely show five years out in the next plan. And you remember, we have a constrained plan, so in order to do, to put that in, either something else will need to come out, or we'll need to identify the funds to fund it. And that would be something that we'd be doing with the planning commission nine months plus from now.
Councilman, Councilman Green?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I have always been a proponent of this project. Being an engineer, maybe I'm a little prejudiced, but if you've got something that is wrong, you should fix it. And if we're going to fix it, we should fix it the correct way, which is the second option. I don't have any problem with applying for shared money if we can do it, but to say that we're basing our decisions strictly on accidents is like saying, well, I've gotten away with jaywalking across Jefferson Avenue for 10 years. Doesn't mean you ain't going to get hit tomorrow. It's something that's wrong, it's poor design. Right now, people coming westbound on Pecosa Avenue yield to people making a left turn and coming out of Laiden Way, and you have to just about break your neck to turn around and see somebody's coming that way. It's just totally, the whole intersection is just totally messed up. And I think as a city, if we know that something's not correct, we should do all we can to fix it. We bought that property umpteen years ago, I can't, so long ago, I can't even remember. We bought it for the sole purpose of straightening that intersection. When we sold the property, the building, we carved enough land out to straighten that intersection. If we don't straighten that intersection, what have we done? We've made a promise that we're not going to keep. I think we've invested money in this already. To not fix it is a mistake, and just basing your opinion on the police reports is just not right. It's gonna happen, there's gonna be a serious accident there, and if we can prevent it, we should do it now. And like I say, if we can get cost sharing, that's fine, but I'm for fixing that intersection.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just, you know, speaking to the project, and I do agree with Councilman Green that preventative maintenance is certainly warranted and something the city should do, but at the tune of $300,000 at an intersection, where I'm going to go back to it, is not, and has not been an issue, I think is an absurd idea. I think if we want to spend money on traffic improvements, we look at intersections and places in the city where there are wrecks and people have been hit, you used a jaywalking example. I can assure you, there's places people have been hit, but it's not been at that intersection. And one thing we have to keep in mind is that, you know, staff is looking for direction here. And if I had to say, well, of course, the second option is the best option, and if we could get revenue sharing, then I would go for it, but you have to ask yourself, even if we got the 50% match, would you be willing to spend $300,000 on this project? That's where I'm at, and I absolutely would not. So I think the most constructive thing we could do as a council tonight is form a consensus, one way or the other, for staff to continue with this project, that second option, if that's the one that people think is the best, or to stop it totally, because I don't... Because I don't think there's, why would we apply for a revenue sharing agreement if you're not sure if you agree to spend $300,000 on the intersection? I know I'm not.
Well, people have said things to me about that being a bad intersection, and they wish we would do something, just to get that thrown out, not that it matters. Okay?
I have a couple, can I ask a couple questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, if we did the option with the traffic calming, we're still gonna have the backup of people coming down Picocson Avenue from the municipal building and having to stop there to make the left, which is the biggest backup, the school buses coming down. That's not gonna change, right? We're still gonna have that backup.
You've got a left turn lane there.
Left turn lane. That'll take a little bit of it up.
There's gonna be a left turn lane there? I don't see one in the picture. Is there gonna be a left turn lane here, Ellen?
I did not see a left turn lane in the picture. I'm not sure. Let me look real fast. One thing about the through...
It looks like there's two, it looks like there's a right turn lane and a left turn lane.
When you're coming down here, this is the traffic going this way, this is the traffic going that way. So, I don't see a left turn lane there.
There is a left turn lane there. No, I'm sorry, no, there's not.
No.
It's just, it looks like a black car, right? And we're all looking at the same thing.
Where the black car, if that black car makes a left, that's still the same intersection that we have today. They have to wait for the through traffic going through.
The way it would improve traffic volume is to improve sight visibility so people wouldn't linger as long, and also to get other vehicles turning out of the way with the improvements to the various turn lanes. So, it wouldn't have that left turn lane, but there would be some improvement there with increased visibility and that sort of thing.
And we would still...
Can't characterize how much right now, but...
So, and then I'm a little confused by, so that big island that's got the white stripes through it, that would be the island? Is that right? That would be a traffic calming island?
It would be, the traffic calming islands are the ovals shown in the center lines of the road.
Oh, these, okay. Oh, that's that, okay. What is...
The hashed white triangle there would be painted to make sure people are going the right way, but it wouldn't necess, it doesn't really help you with traffic calming.
Okay, so, when you come up, when you come up on that intersection, like Bud said, it is confusing because you have, people come up there and they're like, wait. And sometimes they pull up farther and try to make the turn where the merge lane is.
Little Florida.
But that's, yeah. And so, then they're like, oh, nope, I was supposed to turn right here. That's still gonna be the same, right?
Well, the hash, the hash walk is not a raised area, is it?
No.
Well, are we gonna put a vote there?
No, well, I mean, we could investigate a raised area if that's what council prefers there. I mean, we just did a preliminary conceptual idea here. The other thing that would help would be the fact you're not looking down the road when you're at Leyden Way to make a turn, to see what's going on up the road and starting and stopping.
Right.
So, you're gonna see increased capacity there for a couple reasons. But I can't characterize how much of an improvement it would be.
Ellen.
One question, and I don't think we have the data yet, but we don't know, do we have a number of how many cars are taking that right turn onto Leyden? It's in that memo, right?
Yeah, if you look at the memo, and with regard to the amount of accident data, I think you would find that to be statistically significant, there would be very few, if any, intersections in Picocson that would be enough to make, you know, really get some general trends about accidents, if that makes sense.
Here, I think it says 14, 14. Is that, I don't understand what those numbers are. 14?
The first morning, the first numbers of the morning traffic volume, the numbers in parentheses are the afternoon traffic volume.
Okay, so the people making a right on Leyden Way that then would possibly have to turn on Picocson Avenue are 19 and 14.
In the morning, the school, the left turn from Picocson Avenue toward the middle school, it's a very difficult thing to do. And making a left turn from Little Florida Road onto Picocson Avenue is a very difficult thing to do. And when you do that, traffic gets back up there.
Well, but that's what I'm, that's what I don't understand, is that's not gonna change. You're still, that left is still gonna be the same, essentially.
It wouldn't back up on Little Florida with, was it a turn lane going down into Leyden Way? Because if a car came there and stopped to make a left-hand turn, they could move over to their right-hand lane to get around them. Right now, you can't do that.
Yeah, it will make it easier to go on Leyden Way, but I don't think that's...
No, I don't mean on the Leyden Way. They could go around the right side, go up toward the middle school, and wouldn't back the traffic up down Little Florida.
I don't think that's, Ellen, nobody's gonna use that right turn lane to go around a car waiting to turn left to come back on to Picocson Avenue. That's not what that turn lane's there for. Is that correct? Because that's what people do to get around people on Victory, to get around the people turning into running man, is go around them to the right and keep going forward. I don't think the design purpose of this is to move people up trying to take a left so then people have to dip right into Leyden Way to get back on Picocson Avenue. That'll cause more wrecks, and they won't be able to do it if somebody's trying to take a right out of Leyden Way anyways.
Well, those are, okay.
I don't disagree, I disagree with that. People who are around, stop anywhere on Victory Boulevard, or in any development in New York County, and I promise you, people be pulling off the right-hand side, going on, onto the dirt and the grass to get around you to get on that Victory Boulevard.
And that's not legal.
Nobody said it was legal, but that's what they do, and I bet Thomas even has gone there.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't spend money on an intersection quote-unquote "improvement" where an improvement for people to get around the ones taking the left turn on Picocson Avenue would be to go around a stopped vehicle. That, one, it's illegal, and it's more dangerous.
Well, that's already illegal, and I don't think we're...
That would be the only way to do it.
We're not saying we're gonna do that.
So, my other question was, if, so our choice is to either put it in the CIP and pay for it with some future dollars, or pay for it when we get the grant money, and where would that money come from? Would we have to not pay for something else in order to cover this? And what would that be?
Let me, there's your call from the staff report. I said, in order to come back and give you some options, it'd really, really helpful if we knew how much money we were trying to find, which of the two design alternatives we were looking for, which could range from half of $375,000 to all of $600,000. That will shape it. We may have, may have sufficient year-end funding to do some of that, but we haven't even begun that analysis yet. If the revenue sharing is ultimately the option, then we'll have to come up with the money between now and the following fiscal year when it's time, whether that's budget, whether that's a reprioritization. We haven't gotten that far yet. And part of it will be dependent upon the choices that you may make. As the staff memo indicated, if you decide to do this and you wanna pay local money for it all, you know, we need to know which option, and we'll work on it and bring you back some options. The other one, and that won't be like instant, this could potentially compete, as you know, we don't have regular, ongoing, local money going into our CIP. So, it comes through a mid-year process, which, you know, we haven't, we're not even through the fiscal year yet. So, can't tell you that. It could potentially compete for either the bond interest proceeds that we may have next fiscal year, the one after that, and/or potentially for our remaining bond allocation. Everything is a choice, to do something is a choice, to do, not do something else. And we just haven't gotten that far yet.
And every time we do something, yes, he just said, we're taking money from something else, 'cause we only got a fixed amount. And let's see if we can eliminate a couple of these. Is anybody far doing nothing? That was option one. Okay. Thomas? How about, oh, you wanted to do nothing as well? I'm sorry. Okay, do this now for full price. Anybody wanna do that? Let's eliminate that one, then. Okay, now we got it down to three. So, option two is the one with the raised medians and stuff.
Financing, or project option two, is whether or not you wanna do this as a future CIP project. And the other is, because you ruled out the 100% local cash option, based on no one being in favor of that. So, the remaining ones, again, you stated it, and two council members said that was there, they were for that. That was the no option. Option two is, and I'm sorry, we're using options and alternatives interchangeably. Option two, funding option two, is to put it in a future CIP, which is a process which has not even begun yet. And the other is to move forward with a revenue sharing application. In order to do that in 2019, we would need to know whether or not we were going to do with design option one or design option two.
Randy, go ahead.
All right, a question. Is there an option that allows us to continue toward option two with the design only? And then look at our funding costs for next year for car sharing?
I'll think about that. The grant application, if you are wishing to do it, is either something we have to do by this August or two Augusts beyond that, and every other year. If we were to allocate the money to do this design, couldn't tell you off the top of my head what that would be, but that would be 100% local. The revenue sharing program doesn't let you reimburse yourself for expenses you've already done. Are you looking at me like I'm crazy, Ellen? Am I wrong about that?
No.
Ellen, can I ask you a question real fast?
Well, I ask that question because we're starting into the middle school project, and if there are any issues with the middle school project, it may require emergency funding, then we would know about it more by then, before we tie up our money in this project.
Well, of the four options on the table, if you wanted to keep it, if you didn't want to pursue option one, which was, let's not do anything at all with this at this point in time, then that really pushes towards the CIP, future CIP prioritization, because that would, first of all, allow the project to be prioritized along with everything else. But it also would move its likely construction date to well beyond the principal decisions made for the middle school.
Mr. Wheel, if I could capitalize on that, one point that has not been made tonight is a concern expressed by Mayor Hunt Freiberg. The land that belongs to the city that still appears now to be part of the church, if the church becomes accustomed to having that property, even though it's still city property, it could be much more difficult for the city to utilize that property in the future if we were to wait until the future to improve this intersection.
Randy, well, actually, Ellen, if I can ask you an expert opinion in reference to the conversation we had a couple minutes ago about the right turn lane and going around a stopped vehicle? So, we can agree that this is a quote-unquote "safety improvement." I don't think it's much of an improvement, but that's the idea. In your expert opinion, what is safer? What we have now, where cars are forced to stop behind a car taking a left turn, or we open up a right turn lane and open it up for people, as Councilman Sathal described, to go around a stopped vehicle and keep going forward? I think that's more unsafe than the current intersection.
I'm only comfortable looking at the intersection as, design as a whole, because we haven't gotten into the details there. What I can say is, an intersection that's more standard with legs that align, where you don't have people making left and right turns 80 feet up the road from where other people are making turning movements, would definitely be safer than what we have now. And obviously, anytime people follow the rules of the road, it's gonna be safer than if people act on their own.
Is there anything, and there would be no way to, if we did option two, for say, there's no way we could prevent a car from going in that right turn lane and going around a stopped vehicle?
Well, certainly during, certainly during the design, we can look and make sure we're not providing abnormally wide roads there that would encourage behavior that isn't appropriate, you know, like going around a stopped vehicle. But obviously, anybody who designs a road or builds a road can't prohibit, you know, prohibit someone or prevent someone from doing something they're not supposed to.
Well, there are traffic rules, and we live by them every day, and some people violate them. In fact, you know, we have about one less, a half of 1% of the people that speed up and down Brown's Neck, although we have a speed limit, and they shouldn't do that. So, there's no way you can keep folks, I don't know of any way you can keep people from breaking a law if they want to, regardless of what kind of law.
And mark it right turn only.
But we don't need to design this right, left turn right this minute. Does anybody wanna put this in the CIP? That's nearly similar to doing nothing. Okay, how about the cost sharing with the grant, option two, design with the cost sharing? Okay, do we wanna do it by August?
In order to facilitate that, we'll need to bring a resolution at your next meeting because the application deadline with the state is prior to your August meeting.
Okay, so we got a consensus of four of us?
Ellen, do we think we have sufficient statistics and data on this intersection to move right into maybe a design phase? If that's where this is going, if we're starting to go into the cost sharing? Or should we look at more concrete statistics, like you mentioned, we don't have right now?
No, I mean, I know enough to know that it violates the state highway and the federal rules. And as I said, Picocson is such a, is a small community with limited traffic volume, so we might not get a statistically significant sample if we went back years and years. It's just, I'm not sure that it would give a definitive answer by doing that, I would have to say.
Thank you.
I just wanna ask something based on your comment, Bud, which he mentioned, if we go into the middle school project and all of a sudden it's like, uh-oh, guess what? We found this when we took down this wall, and we can't go forward unless we fix this, which we didn't anticipate. And we get in the situation where we have to choose. And if we apply for the grant and get those grant funds but haven't gone forward yet, and something else like the middle school thing comes up where we have to put money toward it, can we say, can we put the brakes on it at that point? Would we be able to and say, you know what, we're not gonna take that grant money because we need to spend this $300,000 or a good majority of this $300,000 on some emergency that just has come up? How does that work?
I'm not sure, I know the answer to that, so I'll tell you what I think rather than what I know. If you haven't spent the money, you can always, you can always say no. Any money that you have spent, you're gonna have to pay them back, if it's their money. But generally speaking, you don't want to, one of the reasons that they require the governing body to say yes to an application is so that the locality will follow through on the application. We wouldn't want a situation where your staff, for example, was, came up with what they thought was a good idea and committed the governing body to spending money that only the governing body can appropriate. I would, I would suggest strongly that whatever, whatever the council says we're going to do, unless we have something that is truly catastrophic, we need to follow through on it.
And we may have hurricane, too, you know?
I know. And what is the timeline between when we would get these funds and begin spending them, and where the middle school would be at that point?
The middle school contract, I'm no expert, is sometime around... The middle school contract, I'm no expert, is sometime around this, a little earlier than this time next year. They expect to be done with the design phase and through the, the bidding phase and have a sense of what it's gonna cost. So I'm no expert, but say, late spring. The way this process works, we make application, and the process is such, Ellen, if I get anything substantially wrong, you know, jump in, but we would hear after the first of the calendar year about the C, the CTV making an appropriation. It would be an appropriation subject to the following fiscal year, I believe.
Fiscal year, it would have to start in fiscal year 21 and, or 22, right?
So the funds would become available for use in fiscal 21.
Okay.
So a few months after the, the theoretical decision on the, on the school construction budget. And I would note too, just for additional background, that when the council allocated approximately $20 million of the $23 million that you, that you had available potentially a couple of years ago for schools, with the understanding that the middle school, which is tentatively scheduled to cost $17.1 million approximately, that the school board has not rushed out to spend the vast majority of the balance of that, because they're building in their own priority contingencies. If it comes in more, they're gonna have to make a decision on how to use the balance of that 20 allocation, 20 million allocation. It's certainly possible that things may go beyond that.
So they would have to use what they got and get no more from us?
Ultimately, that last part is the council's decision, not mine.
Okay.
So we're, four of us, we want you to go ahead with a resolution to come back in July last.
We'll prepare a resolution for next time.
Randy, can you clarify what exactly the consensus is? That my understanding is, go forward with a resolution from you to continue with a revenue sharing agreement for the second project.
Yes, sir.
And we'll vote on that in August.
In July.
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 July, and she has to submit it in August.
Yes, sir, that's, that's what I understand the consensus to be.
Okay, well, let's move on to streetscape improvements, City Hall clock, and we only have a few quick minutes to discuss it. The mayor asked us, I don't know, a month ago maybe, or more, anybody on council that had any ideas about streetscape, to please bring them forward to discuss, and Councilman Huck was the only one that came up with an idea at all. So would you like to talk about your, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Just, again, a little context, council will recall in December of 2018, the council appropriated from our year-end funds last year, $87,373 to support undesignated capital projects, which we knew we would then follow up with a resolution to, to appropriate those. So we came to council in March of 2019, and at that time, council approved $50,000 towards the ambulance replacement, which was the money necessary to finish off that budget, and then the balance, $37,373 appropriated by council to 2020 streetscape improvements. So at that time, we did, as you said, encourage any council members that had a specific idea beyond continuation of tree planting, to, to bring it forward if they would like, and we would help them to quantify it and staff it, and bring it to a work session for discussion in June, and we're here. So there are, there are more potential funding sources than this, but the two main funding sources, other than your general fund balance or something like that, one is potentially some or all of the 2020 streetscape funds previously set aside by council, and/or there is an amount of money that was donated originally for the Heritage Park project in fiscal years 2010 and 11. In fiscal year 2010 and 11, so think beginning the summer of the calendar year 2009, a total of $18,010 was donated for the Heritage Park project. Subsequent, about five years after that, 2014, there was an additional amount of money, $15,326, I think I may have that number a little wrong, but it's pretty darn close, Sulfurex, $1,346, that was also appropriated, or deposited into that fund, but that was for money that was being raised at the time for the Waterman's Memorial. In 2015, the council combined all of those things together and said that those funds could be used to support the Waterman's Memorial project, both the original money from the Heritage Park, as well as the 15,000, 1,500-plus dollars specifically raised for the Waterman's Memorial. And then that sits in our fund balance as a reservation of fund balance right now. Those are not the only funding sources, should you wish to do that, but the, the $18,010 that was originally donated for the Heritage Park project, again, is, is the largest portion of the $19,356 that you have as reserved fund balance. And with that, I'll let, let Mr. Hucks explain that, and then Mr. Callis is here to sort of walk through the staff work. Dave Callis did 99% of, of all of the staff work on this for us.
Please, three minutes of this. Go.
We're not on air, so...
We're not, we are on air, even though our monitors don't show that we are.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I just wonder, with the constraints of time, would it be advantageous to postpone this discussion to a work session at the July council meeting?
I think so, is a big thing. Let's reschedule this work, this work session then, and bring that back to us in July.
Okay.
Okay, we've got about three minutes before we're gonna meet.